Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of June 6th is now called to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative, then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition of the request. When you come before the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. And then before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond to provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. We will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. The second item on the agenda this evening would be public hearings, and the first item under public hearings is 809 Properties, which is a preliminary plat, S U B 23-04. We will hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name's Jaclyn Porter, City Planner, presenting the items tonight for the Planning Department. First item is a preliminary plat for Maple Creek Estates. Many of you are like, "This sounds familiar." It is. We have previously reviewed this. They are now wanting to revise this preliminary plat because that north portion, that lot there, they now want to include it and develop it. So here's an area map of the subject property. It's those three lots along Husband with the Boomer Lake portion over to the west with Simron Plaza there to the southwest. Here's the aerial view of the subject property. It's zoned RSS. RSL is zoning across Husband and Public. Oh, yeah, here we go. I forgot we added this. Oh, you can't hear me? Okay. So sorry. Okay. So it's zoning RSS. RSL is to the east and Public is to the west. These are street views looking at the south boundary of that southern lot and then the north boundary of the northern property. Future land use map of the subject property. Request for a low density for this subject area. Future land use maps are used for desired uses based by the comprehensive plan of the area. Here's a preliminary plat. As you can see, it's adjusted. It is 15 lots on a private street off of Husband. The lots range from .51 acres to 85, .85 acres all through there. The only property that comes off of Husband is the one located there on the south. Stephen Ghost with Ghost &amp; Associates is here. Is Diego here too? Yes, and Diego are here for this subject property and representing the applicant. If you have any questions for staff.
I'm not seeing any. So at this time, we would ask if the applicant would like to come forward.
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephen Ghost with Ghost &amp; Associates, 113 East 8th Avenue. Jackie pretty well covered it. You guys saw this several months ago when we came in. Really, it was going to be a two-phase project at that time with half-acre lots on the south two-thirds and the north third was kind of an unknown. Based on discussions here in that meeting and with our client when we walked out, they wanted to go ahead and just do half-acre lots on the rest of it. So we were going to have to come back with a preliminary plat and final plat for that anyway. So we said, "Hey, timeout. Let's look at this, see if now you're going to do this. Can we come up with a different layout that may be a little more efficient, may create some lots that would be more desirable?" So the plan that is in your packet is what came up with that. I know there were some discussions when we came in the first time about drainage, quite a few discussions about drainage. This actually is a little better from a drainage standpoint. It allows us to maintain a lot more of the pre-existing flow path and where we do have to change it to make it longer, which will slow the developed water down. Still, we don't need detention based on the flow paths that we're dealing with and the study. So if there's any questions, I can answer those now or after the public hearing, so.
Some detail, some of the lots have structures on them now, so I'd presume, I mean, at least early, those structures would remain.
Yeah, the three homes on lots, the plan's up in here, so that's what I'm looking at. On 1, 13, and 15, those are existing homes on the properties and they will be maintained. We've carved lots out around them that have the house, the driveways, the onsite sewer treatment associated with those. Those will all maintain their current driveways out to Husband. And then the lots behind them will be served off of Fenton Drive.
So their access will not be off of the Fenton Drive, then?
Not at this time, no. At some point, you know, if a homeowner wanted to change it, they could, but those driveways will remain as is for now.
And there'll be new houses on all the other lots?
That's the hope.
I do have one question. This is the same question I had before, and that's regarding the private drive.
Yes.
What's the thought process about private drive versus having something that could then become dedicated city street?
With it being a dead-end drive, it's really only going to be used by the homeowners. It's still going to be built like city street, same width to meet fire code and all of that. It's just make it a private drive. If they wanted to gate it at some point in the future, they could. If not, they're going to have to maintain it anyways just because the way local streets get maintained, I mean, it'll be a concrete drive, so it's going to last 30 or 50 years. If they need to fix it, if they need to patch it, if they need to replace it, they can do an assessment within the homeowners association to do that.
And the plan is to have a homeowners association?
Yeah, because there will be common property. So the road really is the only common property associated with this, and it'll be maintained by the HOA.
Because then the utility easement there that's just, I guess, to the south of the road, that would be the utility easement that's on each of those three lots. It's not a common area.
It's not a right-of-way, so there will be appropriate utility easements as we get through the plating process, whether it's just a general utility easement, whether it's a water easement, electric easement, you know, so forth.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Lot 15, that house that's there today, will stay and the access to Husband will be on the south side on a gravel road?
The gravel drive, and then there's a concrete approach. Yeah, and so there's that 35-foot, what we'd call a flag lot to maintain that access and
Any other questions from commissioners?
And if anything comes up during the public hearing, we can address it then. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. At this time, I would ask if there's anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item to come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item to come forward. You could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. John Nasmitz, 2119 North Husband. I own the property across the street from the northernmost tract. You've seen emails from me over the last two or three months, and my concerns are still continuing on those. For example, it requires a number of items for preliminary or final approval of all plats. Section B7 of Article 23, or excuse me, Chapter 23, Article 3, Section 23-63 talks about having all the driveways, curb cuts, and so forth shown within 75 feet of the boundaries of the property. These are not on the plat. I assume these are useful to you as you evaluate light pollution and driveway placement and so forth. They do not appear, oh, excuse me, it's Section B8. I have a typo on mine. Existing utility easements are called out in Section B7 of that, again, within 75 feet. I have pointed out on previous occasions by mail, there is a utility easement on 2115 North Husband, which is directly an extension, if you will, of the utility easement on the property for power lines, not shown. We've heard a lot about drainage, okay? To reach the exit points, we're going to have to have some crossing of the private road as proposed. Section B10 requires proposed culverts to be shown on the preliminary plat. None are shown. In the original applications, when it was looking at the just two south lots being developed, there were three exit points on the drainage study. Current drainage study shows only two. There is a fundamental change in terms of drainage. City staff noted that runoff will be increased by this development, and there are no drainage facilities or detention shown on the preliminary plat. There is items on the drainage study that shows the water will dissipate by being removed from the properties at a faster rate. My understanding is you cannot increase flow or flow rate over time. I did talk this over with the Associate Director of Development, Andy, I've got to remember Andy's last name, Dorflinger. And in his March 23rd letter to the applicants and his engineers, asked for more details on that. Again, the permeability in the drainage study is shown as increased after the roadway and houses are installed relative to the current, which would simply be fields, grass, and so forth. There are a number of additional calculations in there. I'm not going to say I'm an expert on drainage studies. But they did note that detention would be required to take care of the increased flow. I believe they estimated it's six cubic feet per second in that letter. The drainage study also talks about Lot 8 having Pulaski fine sandy soil loam frequently flooded. So I'm concerned about Lot 8 and frequent flooding. I'm sure that we're going to be talking about raising foundations, raising foundations decreases storage and increases flow. These concerns were raised by the city as early as November 22nd with the first discussion of this. They have been looking for it, that sort of thing going through. Also, with respect to runoff and flow through the properties, Chapter 23, Section 2383, subsection C2, applies because there is a curb cut, again, not shown on the plat, but it's at the southeast corner of the upper tract, just across the street from me, and water comes down Husband and then enters the private property. Let me tell you what Section 2383 says. A drainage easement shall be required where stormwater runoff is designated to exit the public right-of-way and enter private property. Such easement shall be located at and extend from the point of entry onto the private property to the point where the runoff enters another property, intersects another drainage easement, or enters a drainage facility, or another public right-of-way. Drainage facility would be retention and so forth. Drainage facilities are required to be shown on all preliminary plats, not on this one. Drainage facility are defined in Chapter 23, Section 7, under definitions. Drainage facility means all elements necessary to store, control, or convey stormwater runoff. Said drainage facilities shall consist of both public and private storm sewers, channels, watercourses, sedimentary facilities, areas covered by drainage easement for the purpose of providing overland flow, as well as culverts, detention facilities, and the like. We don't have a drainage easement. Without a drainage easement, the city cannot deal with somebody putting a tin horn on their property where the water drains, letting the grass grow, backing up the water, because there will be no definition of that drainage facility, and the city will have no recourse should there be problems. I think we've seen a number of those around town where drainage hasn't been adequately considered before approving plats. So that's really my first issue. I know I said a lot, but I'd be happy to try and answer your questions or have discussions and maybe, if appropriate, be corrected by somebody.
So if I understand, your concerns are meeting the requirements for preliminary plat, and your concerns are based predominantly around drainage. Is that correct?
The items that need to be shown on a preliminary plat that are missing, and of those, I think the most important would be the drainage facilities.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Any questions from the commissioners? Thank you.
Okay, my second item.
Okay, let me just point a clarification. Do we have a time limit for speaking?
We can set one.
Okay.
It says we have a large audience.
We do have a large audience this evening. So you have, that was, well, let me ask you a question here, sir. So you had one, that was your first point. Now you're getting ready to make a second point?
Yes, I am.
How many points would you like to make this evening? How many do you intend to make this evening? How many points do you intend to make this evening?
Four and a concern.
Four of concern.
Four items and a concern.
If we could, please, due to the fact that we have a large audience, if you could get the other three in in five minutes, that would be very much appreciated.
The other three will be a little quicker.
Thank you.
Chapter 23, Section 238, easements and dedications. No permanent structure shall be constructed or maintained within the boundaries of a utility or drainage easement. That private road crosses a utility easement. There's been no request for a waiver, and that would appear to be in violation of that requirement. That private road would also be a problem potentially with a drainage easement, but we can't tell until that's put in. Driveways may also be a problem with drainage easements. Permanent structures, the roadway would be a permanent structure. I checked the Stillwater City Code. It does not define permanent structures, nor does the ICC Building Code of 2015 define a permanent. I did look it up in Cornell's Law Library. Permanent structures mean a structure fixed to the ground by various, any of various types of foundations, slabs, piers, poles, or other means. The term also includes a structure placed on the ground, this would be a roadway, that lacks foundations, slabs, piers, or poles, and that can only be moved through disassembly into its component parts or techniques commonly used in house moving. So I think we've got a problem there. Number three, kind of a minor or a less important one. The utilities that are planned in this plat go from one side of the road to the other, so they're on one side, so you're going to have access or potential problems that'll tear up that road. Again, should the city want that dedicated or you got problems, everything along Husband and in the surrounding neighborhoods has utility on both sides of the road, and they don't go underneath. And the fourth point, again, it may be minor. 2385 requires that lots shall abut public or private streets at a distance of not less than 35 feet, except that a corner lot shall be less than 60 feet. Lot 5, which is a corner lot, is difficult for me to determine the 60-foot requirement given the scale and the plat. It may be close, it may not be. It was just hard for me to determine. And those are my four points.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The other concern is sidewalks still remain a concern. The church had to build a sidewalk to nowhere. That was basically under the aspect that Husband was a low-speed, limited-access street. It remains so. It meets the definition as provided in Section 23356, which on those streets requires on both sides. The sidewalks being on the east side rather than the west are somewhat problematic. They were, I've been in that house over 40 years, so I know its history. Sidewalks when Husband was first put in were going to be on the west side, just along the high school side. Probably created one of the most dangerous crosswalks in Stillwater. As cars go north on Husband, they look west when the light's red to see if they can turn. They do not look for pedestrians on their right, and they just come through the intersection. My wife and I have had several close calls on that. Putting some things on the west side would be advantageous, and I know from discussions with city staff, they've looked for bond issues on that.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Colin Walker, 1802 North Crescent Drive. Just a little history. Some of my neighbors and I, prior to COVID, were engaged in a discussion to possibly form a neighborhood association. We really looked toward the, the name's escaping me now, the overlay district.
The Westwood Overlay District.
We really looked at what they had done and wanted to duplicate many of the things that they had implemented and got approved. Unfortunately, you know, COVID happened, and we were not able to proceed with that. Some of the ideas that we had in forming that, and probably continues today, are health and safety of the residents in our neighborhood. We developed a map and indicated we thought we had a jewel in the heart of the city. You know, it's a very walkable neighborhood. Many, most of the homes are owner-occupied homes. Got a lot of families with young children, a lot of bicyclists. It is a, what is it, a share-the-road bike route along Husband there. One of the concerns I have with the number of additional lots proposed here, especially the home that's currently south, the southernmost home, is a rental, college rental, I assume, but numerous times has get-togethers with various, numerous cars along the driveway there. In thinking that some of these potentially could be rentals down the road, I've factored that 13 additional homes with a potential for four vehicles at each of those homes, we could be looking at an increase of 52 vehicles in our neighborhood. Again, with the concerns about crosswalks, I live to the east of a crosswalk that crosses from the west side to the east side of Husband. It is not the most safe crosswalk in our area. Nervous occasionally, I've got three little ones, so that is a concern of mine. Do have some concerns about the runoff, as well as potential for septic system issues with the, being so close to Stillwater Creek, and some of the soil types that are present, and just the potential for flooding issues and pollution into Stillwater Creek due to the development. Just some of the unique things that we have in our town that are in our neighborhood that I'd like to maintain, you know, we have Oak Creek community, we have a storied group home to the north of my, to the north of my house. The residents take frequent walks in the neighborhood. I said, we have the share-the-road bike route. It's just a very, we have a very communal feel in the neighborhood and would like to maintain that. And I'm just concerned about possibly increasing the number of homes that are not owner-occupied with this development in our neighborhood. So appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to come forward and address questions that were raised. come forward and address questions that were raised.
I took notes on several of them. I'll go over those, and if there's additional ones you need, just let me know. With regard to the drainage study, there was a study dated later than Mr. Naismith had that we worked with Mr. Dorflinger through. That one's dated April 11th, where we talk about, there's, there was, in the final study, and I don't know where the increase comment ever came from, but it shows that the discharge in the existing and proposed conditions is similar. And again, yes, overall, the impervious area is increasing with the homes and the driveways, but the way the calculations are done, their aggregate coefficients, and so that is of the impervious area, so that's a factor into it. The other factor is time of concentration, which is the flow path that the water follows to get there. That entry, the husband, where that is shown on the plan, but it's not labeled, and I apologize for that. All of that is discussed in the drainage study, but I realize that that's not reflected on the plat. The drainage channel's shown. The improvements across an easement, the way that's been dealt with in the past, or what the intent of that is, are permanent structures, like he alluded to, roads, parking, utilities aren't part of that because they're not obstructing access to get to the utilities. Yes, in this case, you may have to cut the road to get to a utility, but that can be patched under reasonable course of business. If there's a shed or a house in the way, that's a lot, lot bigger deal. Lot 5 being a corner lot, I think per the definitions, it's not because it doesn't have two frontages, but the frontage on that, and the label at half-size scale is hard to read, but there's 38 feet of curb frontage along that, back where the building setback line is going to be a lot wider. So there is 38, at least 38 feet of frontage on the road versus the 35-foot required, as shown on 15. And then the septic, I mean, per DEQ and city with half-acre lots, we can do septic. The intent is there'll be aerobic systems, not leach fields, so there's alarms on those, there's aerators. The water that's being discharged into sprayheads is evaporating. It's not really soaking in, the way those things are designed, so. The sidewalk along Husband, I mean, we'll make sure we follow when we do the improvement plans in the final plat. There was some discussion from staff as whether a sidewalk along Husband was required or not. When Oak Creek went in, they didn't build one along their frontage. I'm not saying right, wrong, or indifferent, but with staff, and we're not doing sidewalks internal because the length of the dead-end road doesn't require sidewalks because limited traffic, slower traffic, people, I guess, based on our code, feel safer walking in the street, so. If there's some additional items that I didn't catch in that.
I think, see, I think we've talked about curb, this is what I had, curb cuts, utility easements, rate of drainage, rate of flow, utility easements.
Yeah, the curb cuts shown on the other side of Husband, yeah. I'll give you that one. That's not on there.
That was, I don't know, commissioners, anybody else have anything else you'd like for the applicant to address that was raised?
One question, there's a utility easement that runs from east to west across the property. What is that easement used for currently?
They're high-voltage transmission electric lines, overhead electric lines.
Overhead line, okay, thanks.
And we've worked through this plan with the electric department to make sure that the way we're crossing it, where we're crossing it, that they don't have any concerns, and how they're going to lay out their distribution, their distribution system for the neighborhood works with all of that.
So you do work all around Stillwater. How often are septic systems such as this put in within the Stillwater city limits?
We've got another project right now, a commercial project on Western that has one. There's, within the city limits, I mean, we did a final plat in the northeast part of town, probably six, nine months ago, that those were all five-plus acre lots, those were all be septic. In this case, there's gravity sewer to the south, one lot, public sewer main, south along Husband. And we did a study, can we gravity drain this, and this was part of why the north lot was shown without a plan the last time, is the thought was, we could go do smaller lots up there, traditional 50-by-100-foot lots, because we could build a gravity sewer line to serve those. The southwest, call it half of this site is below, the grades are lower than could drain into that, so we'd have to put in a pump system to pump into that if we were doing less than half-acre lots, which the RSS zoning allows 50-by-100-foot lots, but that's not how our client wanted to develop this property. That wouldn't, in my opinion, that would be out of place in this going even smaller, you know, 5,000-square-foot lots versus these half-acre, half-acre lots. But, so, it happens. The newer subdivisions that are all the small lots, they have to have gravity sewer to make it work.
So, is the implication there that a half, you would need a half-acre lot in order to have septic?
Yes, per state, state law.
And you mentioned a new system. How long is your history with this new system? How long have you?
You mean aerobic?
Has it been put out in anywhere else in Stillwater? And if it has, do you know what the success has been?
I mean, they're used all over the nation. I used to live in a house. We lived there for 10 years. It was in Texas, it wasn't here, and we lived in a house in nine years, had to pump the system once, had to replace the air bladder on it twice. So there's some maintenance, but there's no grinder pumps. It's a concrete tank with an aerator in it and chambers that treats the water, and then it goes in the last one, there's a chlorine doser in it, and it's sprayed out irrigation heads. And the local DEQ office will be part of the permitting of those systems when it's done.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess, just, you know, Dr. Naismith raised several concerns, and I couldn't write them down and capture them very well, so I think I'm hearing, and I guess I'm looking for you to say, is it your position that outside of something missing on the drawing, you think that you've addressed all those concerns?
I do believe, I believe we've met the intent of the code. Yes, there are some things that should have been labeled and shown that aren't, that are within that 70 feet, 75 feet outside the boundary, but I think don't materially impact how this is going to function.
Do you have one other, oh, I'm sorry.
I think the only thing that I caught that he was asking about was the Lot 8 flooding that you didn't mention anything on.
So, the floodplain's actually down in the creek bed. The soil map, we use the soil map as part of our drainage study that talks about what are the soils that are in there, and they're classified into four, A, B, C, and D, based on their ability to transmit water and absorb water. And so, the USDA definition for the soil type that's down there talks about, they have been inundated in the past when they were created, but the floodplain, the mapped floodplain, does not go into this property at all.
That was my last remaining question, so. Thank you, Commissioner.
There's the colored map, that's soil map, and so it's this purple soil type that's down in this corner. And here's the floodplain map, and our boundary's here, and the floodplain is down in the creek below this spillway.
Any other questions the commissioners may have for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will ask staff to return to provide findings and alternatives.
All right, the findings, the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision and zoning requirements. The future land use map recommends a low-density residential use at this location. And your alternatives is accept findings and approve the proposed preliminary plat as presented. Approve the proposed preliminary plat with conditions noting what conditions should be met for the approval of the final plat. Reject findings and deny the proposed preliminary plat as presented. Find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a decision and table the request to a certain date, noting the action must be taken within 60 days of the public hearing.
Questions for staff?
Could I just confirm one thing on your, you say adequate public facilities and finding improvements at the bottom? It says drainage engineering has been reviewed, engineering, Stillwater Engineering, right?
Correct.
Has reviewed the preliminary drainage report and deems it acceptable.
Correct. Yes.
Anything else for staff?
Well, I guess, I guess I'm concerned about the finding that says the proposed preliminary plat meets the subdivision and zoning requirements, just about really the disagreement that Dr. Naismith has with that particular comment. And obviously, he's read the requirements and is able to reference specific pieces of that, so there just seems to be some tension there.
So in other words, there's no problem that the plat is not strictly in compliance with ordinances?
So, the only thing that came down to is the labeling of the drives and the outside the 75 feet. The other items that he suggested that it needs to show the drainage on the property is not required. That is required on the final plat, which they establish any drainage easements.
Dr. Naismith, please refrain from outbursts.
The preliminary plat requires existing easements, driveways, infrastructures as such, since proposed drainage easements aren't quite figured out yet, they're not proposed on here.
One last further clarification for me. So sidewalks are not required on preliminary plat, but they are required on the final plat, is that correct?
That's it, they so choose. They are not required to put in sidewalks because the lots are not smaller than 2,000 square feet, so.
Just also, so, I think we touched on this last time, and that's why the church was required to put in the sidewalk to nowhere. However, this is not being required to put in sidewalks.
Yes, because it was considered a commercial development.
Thank you.
Jackie, I did not write down the items that you said were lacking. Could you tell me again?
They were the same items that Mr. Ghost addressed, labeling the curb cuts that are shown, and then the extension of 75 feet outside of existing easements and utilities.
So, is it your position that those aren't material?
Correct. This, the majority of this property is self-sufficient with the sewer, because the sewer's on that side of the road. Oh, sorry. The sewer is located to the south. That's really the main utility that is over there that would be shown.
I'm trying to make some notes here, so we might be able to get to a motion here before long. So curb cuts labeled 75-foot extension of?
Basically, it's that buffer of showing other, other utilities that are there, that are outside of that, the plat.
So, a 75-foot extension of utilities beyond the plat, is that what we're saying?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
And no drainage needs to be added to the preliminary, only the final?
Correct, if they so choose to have drainage, if they need it, which we'll go through our department with improvements, not ours, but city.
City, it'll go through the city drainage, city engineering will review the final.
I guess I would say that, you know, I don't, I don't want to certainly dismiss also Mr. Walker's comments, you know, he took the time to come down here and present those. I just, I just, I guess I always struggle with, you know, how do you know what's going to happen in a neighborhood? You know, what's the impact going to be? And I think, I think that's, that's a tough one, because I actually don't live that far from here, and so I can kind of share those concerns, but it's.
I could just kind of add a comment to your, I know it's a rhetorical question, but I'll add an observation. Been around long enough to have watched that there was quite a bit of opposition when Oak Creek went in, and there was opposition when the group home went in, and I found it really, I was really pleased this evening, Mr. Walker, to hear you find that those are attributes to your neighborhood. So I think that that's really a wonderful thing. I know change can be really scary and frightening, and a lot of us tend to go down to the dark hole of what's the worst thing that can happen, right? Instead of embracing some of the positives that change could bring. So I was very happy to hear you share that this evening. Editorial comment to your rhetorical question.
Thank you.
So just a little bit more discussion. I know we all, we always have the option to have some conditions, and one thing we could consider is the conditions that were noted by Mr. Ghost and by Jackie as she went through and talked about those items that were still lacking that are acknowledged by the applicant that need to be there, so that would be perhaps a way to acknowledge the items that were raised this evening.
That is also with the understanding that this item will come back to you.
Absolutely, for final, this is just preliminary.
The preliminary comes back to you.
But they'd only come back on the final plat, right? Not another preliminary?
No, another preliminary is required to come back of the newer one.
The second one said that there should be met for approval of the final plat.
Correct. The section in the code is actually the preliminary plat. This was discussed with the attorneys on Park Valley when we did a condition for it, so they're going to have to come back.
So, okay, so if we were making a condition, then it needs to come back, the preliminary would need to come back for a second if we make it conditional? Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
Anyone entertaining a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept findings and approve the proposed preliminary plat as presented.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. It's, no, I'm pushing it, but it's not. Not going to work.
Okay, we have four yeses, Chair, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Next item on the agenda is Vertical Bridge, Chair of Jared Fouts, sets a specific use permit, SUP 23-03. We'll hear from staff first.
Alright, thank you. So the next item is a specific use for a telecommunications tower located at 1730 North Jardoe Road. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is near Brook in Jardoe, Paines over there to the west, and Sunrise is to the south. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. To get a little understanding, Skyline East is to the west. And this is currently a, the current use of this property is a storage facility. And there is an industrial zoning to the north. It has a couple of different businesses in it, including a cannabis-growing facility. Here is a straight view of the subject property. Where you see the office is near us. It's going to be located between where it kind of dips in. And then you see the protruding, oh, you can't see my mouse, I'm like circling with my mouse. Where you see the other structure out is going to be placed in there about 20 feet. And the proposed tower is going to be 111 feet and 6 inches, no, yes. Hold on, I'm reading my, I'm going to make sure I'm reading the stats right.
The tower's 160 feet.
Yeah.
Proposed tower's 160 feet is what the report says.
Yep, yep. I was, I was pretty sure I was reading that wrong. So, yes, the proposed tower is 160 feet tall. And this meets the requirement set forth in the residential zoning that it has to be 110% from the structure is being proposed. There's the 11. Is the 111 feet and 6 inches is from the nearest residence. So what would be required is 176 feet from adjoining residential lots. But the applicant has stated they understand that a variance is required for that distance from the residential lot. Oh, here's the zoning. Here's the zoning map. Residential's there, commercial and industrial to the north.
Do you have any questions for staff?
Can you say anymore about the variance?
I, I cannot at this time. I believe they want to proceed with this to see if it happens before they proceed with the variance.
So we are asked to approve or disapprove this, and then later they'll get the variance?
Correct. And the applicants are here, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention they are here.
I might be missing it, but it has to be 176 foot from adjoining residential lots?
Yes.
And it's not?
Correct.
How close is it?
111 feet.
111 feet and 6 inches.
Okay. So if you, if you drew a 176-foot radius circle around the tower, is it going to touch a structure?
Yes. Yeah, because there, there are houses now built there in Skyline East on those lots.
Okay.
Well, actually, that isn't really stated, it's going to touch the property. It didn't say it's going to touch its structure.
It, it is a lot, residential...
So it's just a lot, it's, you don't know if there's something there or not.
Resident zone property. So property is a lot line at this point.
I think probably it becomes a moot point, though, because someone could build something there later.
Yeah, but they would know the tower was there.
Well, yeah, but then they couldn't have their property restricted by someone putting a tower up.
It would be a condition of purchase, you see the tower there, you decide whether or not you want to buy it.
Fire beware.
Well, the city does have...
Fire beware.
The city does have the 110% there for a reason already, which...
Yeah, I think if I were the owner of the adjoining property, they'd forget it.
Regardless of...
You're not putting it up.
Fair enough.
So I, I do have, I do have a question for staff. So I found it curious as I read this, that it's talking about the 110% of the height of the tower from an adjoining lot line of any residential zoned property. And it is in the center of a commercial zone. And so there's no requirement from a distance from a commercial structure. Is that correct?
It is, from a commercial, it doesn't require it. But since it is considered a full parcel, it, it's going to, the parcel itself is adjoining there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So who gives the variance?
Board of Adjustment.
City Board of Adjustment.
Yes.
What do you think their chances are?
Right now, we're, we're struggling just to have a quorum. So, so if you know anybody, this is me advertising, we are looking for board members.
Yeah. So any, any other questions for staff on this item? Alright, seeing then, we'll ask if the applicant would like to come forward and make any statements or clarifications for us? Good evening.
Directors of the Commission, thank you so much for hearing the proposal tonight. My name is Jared Fouts, and I live at 4714 West 80th Street in Prairie Village, Kansas, 66208. I'm here tonight on behalf of Vertical Bridge and T-Mobile. I am representing them. And they are asking for approval of a specific use for, as staff noted, the 160-foot monopole-style cell tower. So Vertical Bridge is a owner, builder, and operator of tower, cell towers. And T-Mobile in this project would be considered the anchor tenant. So they would be occupying the, the space at the top of the tower. And so both Vertical Bridge and T-Mobile recognize the need for reliable coverage for local businesses, schools, households, and also for reliable 911 service. I, I don't think it's, it's, it's probably not a surprise, anybody here, everybody's using their cellphones these days. People are getting rid of landlines, working out of their homes, things like that. It's creating a further need and demand for more robust and reliable coverage. And that's really why we're here tonight. We want to enhance the coverage, make it better, make it more reliable. As far as, there were some comments made, and I, perhaps I misunderstood, the 111 feet is to the residential property line? It's not to the structure? I'm not sure if, is that, did I hear that right? Okay, alright. And, and there's, there are options as far as setbacks. If, if the city's concern is, has to do with the fall zone, there are fall zone letters and things that can be certified by engineers that will, you know, verify what that radius would be surrounding the tower. If that's where the concern lies. It, it is true, we don't need that to that residential property line over there to the west. There was one other comment as well that I might be a little bit confused on. I, I thought that we could, and again, I could be misunderstanding, but I thought that we could request a variance in concurrence tonight. But that could be, I could be mistaken about that. Okay, okay. So, okay, well, that clarifies that then. Well, if there's any other questions, I can be happy to answer. I've got some colleagues that are here with me tonight, one from Vertical Bridge, one from T-Mobile. So I, between the three of us, hopefully, we can answer everybody's question. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm just curious, why, why right here? I mean, it looks like as you go northeast, there might be options that don't have any restrictions.
Yeah, that's, so, and part of this might be a, maybe a question for the desired area for coverage for T-Mobile specifically. However, I will say, we've, we've been working on this particular area for quite some time. There's a lot of residential, especially the further you go to the west. We've looked at several options. This was, this was not one of the first options we looked at. There were a variety of circumstances. But we felt like it being a commercial property and a storage property, these, these projects tend to work really well on those types of properties. It fits in a little bit more with a use on a commercial versus, you know, even a church or something like that. You see them actually quite a bit on, you know, public storage or, you know, other various similar storage facilities. This just happened to be the property that was in the desired coverage area where they needed to be. And was a use that seemed to fit in. It's, it's hard to get, it's hard to find properties that are close that will cover residential that are not too close to residential.
Yeah, I can see that.
So it seems like the only problem is the, getting the variance. And I don't, do you have engineers that can say, yes, we're going to get a variance, we've done this before, no problem?
Are you referring to the fall zone letter that I...
Right, I mean, you probably have engineers that say, well, it, it can only fall so far because it breaks and collapses on itself. Is that, have you tried that before? I mean, what are your chances of getting a variance, do you think?
Well, it's kind of hard for me to answer that. I will say that we can provide certified letters that are signed, stamped by certified engineers that will, you know, verify a fall zone.
So the fall zone is much less than 176?
Yeah, well, my understanding, and I'm not an engineer, I just want to be clear about that. I, my understanding is it's much less than that. It's, it's, it's tends to be between half to two-thirds is what I understand it to be.
So you just have to convince the Board of Adjustments that that's right?
I do have a question. Given the 110% that is part of the city code, did your engineers and designers take a look at what height of tower would fit within that? And what kind of coverage that would be able to be provided?
Yes, ma'am, we did. We weighed the options as far as the lowest we could go. And this was, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to, I want to be careful because I don't want to speak too much to the coverage side of things, because I'm not a radio frequency engineer. But we did go back and forth quite a bit to determine which height would, would provide the best coverage for that area. You know, without going low, too low to where it wouldn't, it wouldn't be beneficial.
Any other questions for the applicant?
That area that's, at least on my drawing, is pink, that's the, I guess that's the storage unit property? What are, what are the dimensions of that property? Do you know, approximately?
I don't, I don't currently have the dimensions for this lot. But it is the cross, it's, the parcel is considered, the storage unit, I should say, is on both sides of Brooks.
Oh, okay, I got you.
It's all one owner, one entity.
So there's nowhere to place that tower that gets within the existing code without a variance that's on that property?
I'm assuming that that's a yes for you.
That's correct. Because even if you go north or south, and just due to the nature of where the buildings are, his storage buildings, and the need to have the driveway that goes around the storage units, and you have to be able to get into the storage units, there's really not a way to shift it further to the east.
Those, those monopoles, they have guy wires?
No, not a monopole.
What is the area of coverage for this tower?
I might have T-Mobile's RF.
That, that would be fine. If you want to come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. You're, you're here, we want to hear from you.
Yeah. Name is Ivan Blanco, I'm at the 8020 South Prairie Road, Stillwater, Oklahoma, 74074. So background on this site, it is a replacement site. It will be replacing an existing telecom site we have there off of Manning. We have a wood pole there off of Manning and about Skyline to south of there. That site has met its life, we can't upgrade it, we can't do anything with it. It's very limited on its capacity and coverage. So the goal for this new site will be to be able to add all of our new technologies that we need to deploy to support all the capacity and coverage we have for the area. Part of the reason for its height over the other side is because we have to also go over that crest. You know, Skyline kind of goes over and you go downhill from Manning. And it needs to be able to get into the Perkins Road area and serve Atwood, serve Lowe's, serve that whole shopping area. So it's basically, I try to cover the same thing that that site covers over there off of Manning, and then some. So it will provide us a little bit of coverage improvement to the northeast, because we'll be moving a little bit further to the, to the, to the east. But with the additional height, we'll be able to get back over to where we were and serve all of Manning and, you know, to east of there, or west of there, sorry, toward, you know, toward the husband area, husband area, Perkins Road area, and go a little bit further to the west. We do have another site over near Seminole Plaza that helps pick up where we're, we drop off. But its main goal is to cover that northeast part of Stillwater and augment what we have right now with the limited site that we have off of Manning. So that's an old Sprint site that basically has served its purpose. And will be, will be demolished once we build this site.
Staff has been able to get the acreage of the site, though it's 3.0, I think it's 3.93 acres?
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
So what is the radius of service for the tower?
Uh, radius of service for the tower will be anywhere from, depending on, depending on the technology we're talking about, could be anywhere from half a mile to six or seven miles. It just depends on what band you're on. So, for example, our latest product that we deployed here recently is our home internet service, where people buy these little routers, they use the home internet. They work the best within a few miles of the site, actually, within a couple of miles of the site. And we've had a huge growth here in Stillwater with those. So we desperately need more capacity to serve those. So those will be very good in those residential areas. We've actually been deploying a lot of them in residential areas here. And then, once we get to the lower bands, which will be like 600 megahertz, 900 megahertz, that will cover upwards of about six or seven miles. You won't get the same performance, but you'll get good coverage from that. So it all depends on what band you're on, it gets kind of complicated. But I would expect easily upwards of seven miles from this site. Within city limits, it changes obviously because of your clutter, building density, you know, trees. That really limits the amount of service you get, so.
You mentioned the pole on Manning, do you recall how tall that one is?
I think it's basically a utility pole, so it's probably about 60 feet.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure, I'd have to look at the planning tool and see what we have it set to. It's just above, if you know where that sub, that substation is.
Yeah, I, I, when I drove out, looked at this site, I saw the one on Manning.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's about 60 feet. And it's, we've got three antennas that are basically just clamped on the very top of it. So it's probably somewhere around 65, 60 feet, somewhere in there. But I'd have to look, because your typical utility poles run anywhere from 42 feet to the top for the, you know, the smaller ones to, you know, 80 foot, 100 foot for some of the bigger, taller wood poles. But I'd have to look at it.
Thank you.
But it's, it's obviously nestled in to that Manning area on the down... But it's, it's obviously nestled in to that Manning area on the downside hill of the ridge there, so it does cover Perkins Road quite well. If we have to move to the east because it's the only place we can build a tower, we need to go higher.
So, if you put up a 100-foot pole, you, you could fit it on here without a special use permit, right? Because you've got 110 feet.
It's, yeah, if we meet the, the requirements for the fall zone, whatever that might be, or the variance that you have in place.
But that would mean you'd need another tower somewhere else to get, you'd need another tower somewhere else because you couldn't get there.
We might, yeah, because we would probably have some shadowing from that ridge. I'd have to do some, we have to do some coverage plots to figure out exactly what the delta will be, but the lower we go, the more shadowing we get from clutter, trees, things like that. So, even if the terrain only rises about 60 feet, when you've got 40-foot trees on top of that, that basically becomes a wall for RF.
Yep.
We were discussing earlier, it's like, there, we had a, you know, the tornadoes go through Little Rock, would have been good to have some examples of monopoles that get destroyed by tornadoes. We actually had one, they got broken in half, and it was actually designed to break in half. So, that would be probably something good to, to provide, an example of what monopoles are designed to do. How about the structural guy though? Let them handle that.
I, I think for the sake of information, I would, do you have someone here who could speak structurally about how, how they're designed to perform? No?
No, I don't think we do, sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thanks.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item, to please come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item, to come forward.
May I?
Yes, you, absolutely, you can come forward. You can come to the podium and just.
I don't know that I have a lot of reports.
That, that would, you're fine, just, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
Osborne, I live at 1701 North Jardot. I don't really speak that loud, but apparently they say my voice carries well, so. I live within 300 feet, I received a letter the 17th, dated the 17th of May. Today is June the 6th, so I haven't had a lot of time to do any exploring on this situation. And I would like to have that time because obviously, they've had a lot of time to decide where they want to put this tower or this pole, and I haven't decided which it is now. Is it a tower or is it a pole?
I think, I think the technical term would be referred to with the code, it's a tower. Monopole is the type of design that it is, and that's how it's engineered. The engineering term would be a monopole.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, as a property owner, and I'm sure there are surely other property owners here, but if not, I think that we should have time to, this is the fir, if this is the plat, this is the first time I've seen it. If that's an objection, I, listen, I'm a progressive person, I work for the city of Stillwater. I do not want to cause a problem, but I do want to know what we're talking about. And I really don't, other than telecommunications, T-Mobile wants it, I'm an AT&amp;T person, somebody else is probably what, Spirit, Sprite, whatever they call it. I just think that we need more time. That's what I have to say.
All right.
Plus, I want to know, I have another question.
Yes.
What kind of revenue is this and for who? If it's to take care of the city of Stillwater, to help us with our needs in the city? I would lean toward the positive. If this is a revenue or an individual on a piece of property, I'd like to discuss that further.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thanks. At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and at this time, I would ask the applicant if they would come forward to address any of the questions that were raised.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's. Are you specifically talking about the lady that just addressed some concerns?
Yes.
Yeah, I, well, the, the facility itself would, would serve that area, so it would definitely serve the, the customers in that area, the T-Mobile customers in that area. And if there were other tenants on the tower, and, and that might be a good thing to point out as well, that it is co-locatable, which means that there are other carriers that could put their equipment on the tower, and so, I think she mentioned maybe an AT&amp;T customer, so if AT&amp;T were to put equipment on that tower, that would, that would help serve the area as well. I don't know their coverage needs, so.
Okay. Well, a tower that tall might be popular.
If, if AT&amp;T or somebody else wants to, to put something on the tower, is T-Mobile obligated to allow that by law?
Yeah, well, actually, the, so the tower owner would be Vertical Bridge.
Okay.
And, and T-Mobile is an anchor tenant, so they would occupy the top spot, and then AT&amp;T or whoever, you know, would be able to lease space within the ground lease area, and, and it is co-locatable, which means, and that's part of the city code as well, if I recall it, there's a requirement that you have to have, it's got to be co-locatable, meaning other tenants can put equipment on the tower, it's got to be structurally capable of, of the additional loading, which it is. So, it would be, to answer your question, though, it would be a lease with Vertical Bridge.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a vertical distance that the next tenant on the tower has to be below? When you say co-locatable, does that mean they can be physically right beside each other on the tower?
There, there is a certain separation, I, I don't, it gets kind of technical, I don't want to get too, too much into it, but it's, it's, I mean, the general rule of thumb is you, you kind of figure about 10 feet, 10 feet of vertical space, and they're, they're kind of stacked on top of each other. I'm not sure how exactly close they, they can't get those tips too close to one another.
So, every, every new tenant's less advantageous than the top?
If it, well, it depends on what their coverage needs are, and again, I mean, who's to say who the next tenant would be and what their coverage needs? Every, all the carriers have different coverage objectives, so it, you know, but you, you never know, I mean, other tenants, it's, 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 it's not like it's a 60-foot pole and you would be going down to 40 feet. That, that would be a little, little dicey, I mean, but generally speaking, the taller you are, you know, you know, the better off you are, but.
I wanted to follow up on one question, I think, that Ms. Osborne had, was, does the, does the storage unit get revenue off of the location of the tower on their property?
There's a lease agreement in place between Vertical Bridge and the, and the property owner, yes, there's a.
Okay. So, if there were a location on their property that the tower could work, except that they had to tear down a storage, one unit, it might be worth it to them to, to sacrifice that unit because they're getting revenue, maybe?
It's, I, I don't know that I could speak to that, possibly, it's, it'd be, it'd be their call, really.
Yeah, I was just looking for options to.
Sure, no.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
At this time, I'd ask staff to return and provide findings and alternatives, please.
All right. Okay, findings. The land development code allows telecommunication, communication towers to be permitted by the, by granting a S U P. The land development code allows for telecommunication towers maximum height to exceed 75 feet upon an approval of an S U P. The proposed cell tower use is an accessory use within an existing commercial development. The existing commercial use will require, remain at this location. The telecommunication tower will require a variance for section 23 dash 113, 1I1. So, that brings me to the alternatives. It's to accept findings and recommend that the city council approve, for the city council to approve the proposed S U P as presented, find the S U P to be acceptable with conditions, and recommend approval with stated conditions, find that the S U P is not in appropriate use for the property based upon the impact to the surrounding vicinity, and do, and do not recommend that the city council approve the S U P. You can also find the additional information or discuss, discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Mr. Just have any questions over the findings for the alternatives? Thanks, Jackie. Anyone thinking of a motion, perhaps? Chair would entertain a motion or discussion?
I'm moved to accept findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed S U P as presented.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Okay, that one didn't pass, is anyone entertaining another motion?
I would like to see, as they stated, the engineering of the fall, they said that it could tend to be somewhere between 50% of the height to one, two-thirds of the height, and, I mean, we're well within that at 111 feet, so I would like to see some engineering on that. It's, it just seems like it's a large distance between, like, we're not talking about 10 feet here from what the city 110% requirement is, we're talking about, like, over 50 feet.
So, that would be alternative number three, is what I'm, what I'm hearing you say, and that would be that we have some additional information that we'd like to gather before rendering perhaps another motion?
I motion to find that the S U P is not in appropriate use for the property based on the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend the city council approve the S U P.
And is there a date at which you would like to have this information? The next planning commission meeting is June 27th.
But, there's, these are numbered 1, 2, 2, 3, which one did you, at least on mine?
Yep.
Yeah, yours is numbered wrong.
Yep, you're correct.
Did you want the, which one did you want to do? Additional information or just not approve?
No, I prefer additional information.
So, that would be number four, actually.
Yeah, thank you for the correction on that, I was just reading off of the third one.
So, it's actually number four.
So, I would motion to find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date, which would be the next planning commission meeting on, what was?
June 27th.
June 27th, 2023.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote.
That motion passed.
Okay, very good. Let's see, the next item on the agenda is Look Properties LLC, Care of Gossen Associates, it's a map amendment, MA 23 dash 02.
All right, thank you. All right, so this next item is a map amendment located at 1017 and 1109 West 9th Avenue, 1024, 1104, 1110, 1122, and 1124 West 10th Avenue, and 920 through 924 South Jefferson Street. This is a rezoning case from RSS to RT. Here's an area map of the subject property, it is the half portion of the block on, of, between Jefferson and Adams, between 10th and 9th. Here's an area map of the subject property, kind of zoomed out, you have Stillwater Creek, which is, is Catty Corner to the south of it, and the rest is residential. The zoomed-in areas, all these and the two there off of 9th. Here's the zoning map, adjacent is all RSS, but there is high-density zonings in the vicinity. Here's a future land use map. As stated before, the desired use of the community based on the 2030 comprehensive plan was stated to be a low-density residential. Uh, I got to go to my discussion items, sorry. The subject property is made up of lots of various sizes, and all but one lot is conforming to the required minimum lot width of 50 feet in the RSS zoning district. The one non-conforming lot is currently legal non-conforming in the zoning district. RT zoning minimum lot width is 60 feet, and only three of the current lot layouts would be confor, would be in conformance. The rezoning would then create five non-conforming lots, the current uses of the property with mul, with multiple dwellings are considered legal non-conforming at this time. These uses do not meet the uses by right in RT, and will be considered non-conforming uses as well. Please note that the applicant has indicated the desire to demolish the current structures and develop subject properties with duplexes. Are there any questions for staff?
Out of the 50 feet to the 60 feet, I had questions about that. It's, I guess, the fundamental question, what, can this property, which runs a full length of a lot, or a city block, and then there's a smaller segment? I didn't understand this, so that's why I'm asking the question, I didn't understand the text. The question is, is there any way that that could be divided up to meet the 60-foot minimum?
Yes, it can.
So, and that, that doesn't require, there's, there's not a lot of work in doing that, I mean, as far as the city's concerned?
Well, anytime it's over, you move or split over three, it's going to require a plat.
So, that, okay, but they could meet the 60-feet requirement?
If, yes, if so, yes.
Just, not currently, okay?
Correct.
Great.
Seeing none, we take, take this opportunity to see if the applicant would like to come forward.
Yeah, I forgot to mention they are here.
Just keeping you on your toes.
Good evening again, Stephen Goss with Goss and Associates. The eight lots that are out there are actually parcels, this contains 20 platted lots, is one of the original plats, not the original plat of Stillwater, but one of the very early plats that platted 25-foot by 140-foot lots. So, it, our client is asking for RT zoning with the hope of doing something a little more dense than single-family homes, based on how this zoning turns out. There's a couple of plans floating around with duplexes that, depending on which plan's chosen, how this goes, there may be variances requested through Board of Adjustment if necessary regarding lot widths and building setbacks, to try to kind of maintain the character of the surrounding neighborhood, but allow some infill development on a much-needed area that's fairly blighted right now on some of these properties, so. That's all, and to the comprehensive plan, that low-density residential is less than 20 units, units an acre, which in this 1.6 acres would allow up to 31 units. Again, even if we were to build a structure on every house that doesn't meet current standards, current zoning standards, I mean, that'd only be 20 structures, and this was platted back when zoning wasn't a thing. And there's lots all over town where there's a structure on a 25-foot lot, or it's on two, or three, or four, just all depends on how the owner at that time wants to develop it. So, if there's any specific questions, I can try to answer those. So if there's any specific questions, I can try to answer those.
Who, what kind of occupancy is there now of those houses?
They're all rentals. It's all owned by one entity, and so they're all rentals right now. There's no owner occupied.
What is the occupancy rate of those?
We don't know.
So has anyone talked to the current renters to find out what they think about it?
Not to my knowledge. It's, the property's on the market for sale. I mean, there's a big sign out in front for sale. And so, this application is being made on behalf of the current property owner and the proposed, somebody who's interested in purchasing it, so.
But there are persons renting now, and their house is going to be gone. Their rental property...
Right, up to the terms of their lease. I don't know if they're month-to-month right now or what, but I'm sure their leases will be honored, so, the terms. And I don't know what the terms are. You can't just kick somebody out.
Well, one of the terms is Section 8. I know some people that live there.
Okay.
Is the future owner going to allow Section 8?
Are any of the existing?
Yes.
Are Section 8?
Yeah, one of the houses, I just, actually, we just talked to the lady today. She's Section 8. She's been in there for eight years. She's been in Stillwater for over 30 years, and she's, this has been her home for eight years in Section 8.
So, I mean, this is a zoning request. This doesn't, if this is approved, it doesn't mean everything's going to get demolished tomorrow or anything like that. It's just a step in the process of development, so.
Well, my questions are just towards trying to figure out what kind of respect for the current situation is, what, how the owner will... Another point is, this is part of the Ville, the old black community in town, and there is a big push to maintain the character. In fact, you mentioned trying to maintain the character. And I'm curious, what is the view of what the character should be maintained to be?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Corey Williams, 621 South Husband, Broker of Look Properties. I represent the seller and the seller's estate, as well as the proposed developer out of Fayetteville that's interested in purchasing the entire parcel. Commissioner Algren, you probably know better than anybody, given the proximity this is to your residence. Some of these homes are habitable. Some of them are habitable because there's literally no other choice and no rent's been charged in years and years and years. One of these houses is occupied entirely by animals and has been since the patriarch had it forever and ever. He just decided not to fix that house, and there was enough stray dogs in the neighborhood, so they got to have that house. And so, the developer is a successful developer out of Fayetteville, is interested in doing primarily student housing. If you go further to the east, Barton Square at 9th and Knob Block, is something that this will look relatively close to. All of the parking, they think, they intend to enter off of the alleyway, which will have to be improved at the developer's expense. And so, I don't know that there's a lot of character and integrity left in a lot of these structures. Having grown up also in that area, just off of 11th and Pine, I remember this. Bob did a great job of aggregating these, but he did not do a good job of maintaining them. I reference Bob, I mean, Mr. White, Bob White. And so, to specifically answer your question, I think it will primarily be student housing. I manage Barton Square, and it's 100% student housing.
Is Barton Square in duplexes?
It's duplexes and triplexes, yes, sir. Those are 36, there's 16 units, 36 bedrooms, 36 bathrooms.
Well, I thought student housing packed them in a lot denser than duplexes.
Not everybody. Actually, there's a lot of developers, and you're, everything's market-driven. And the market's actually pretty efficient. The students will tell you where they want to live and what they want to live in, and so you'll see some of the dense stuff that has a lower occupancy rate, and some of the less dense stuff that has some amenities to it have a higher, or a lower vacancy rate, higher occupancy rate. Barton Square's 100% occupied, and it's one of the first assets that leases up for us on an annual basis.
So the answer to the question is Section 8's out of the question?
I don't think that there will be Section 8 there, but I give you my word, as somebody who accepts Section 8 in a lot of our properties, that we will be helping those who want to relocate or need assistance relocating, finding some other suitable housing. My understanding is, Bob's son, David, has actually spoken to all or nearly all of the tenants in there, and they are aware that the property has been listed up on the market. It's been posted for quite some time. And they are aware that leases are not being renewed, and if somebody wants to reach out to me, I'm glad to help place them somewhere. We have plenty of properties around town that do allow Section 8.
Well, the lady I'm talking about didn't even know about the meetings tonight. I offered to give her a ride, and she said she had to go to work at 6:00. That's why she's not here.
Understood.
So there's one property owner who is clueless about what's going on.
A renter or an owner?
She's a renter, yeah.
Okay.
Loretta.
Okay.
We, I run by there like three times a week and talk to her, and actually, my wife interviewed her for the last census.
Okay.
So, yeah, there are people there. I know, it, there's some pretty nasty parts to it for people, especially those that live out in gated communities. I mean, it looks blighted, right? But there are people living there.
There are in some of the structures. There are still multiple of those structures that are absolutely vacant.
Yeah, I can understand that. They don't look, they don't look too good. But there are still people there.
Yes, sir.
And we've got lots of issues around this country with affordable housing. I think it's just something, you know, it may not change anything, but I think it's something that should be discussed in a town like Stillwater, is what do we do for affordable housing? And they say it could be a long time, it could be a year, it could be two years or three years, but it isn't too long before this person's going to be said, well, your lease is up, you're out of here.
Yeah.
And you're on your own to find something.
I might have a little bit more of a heart for people like that, maybe than the average developer, so, like, I would be glad to visit with her, and when the time comes. I would also say, as Mr. Goss said, this is a step in the process, and as you're aware, there are multiple steps in the process. Current interest rates levels may actually, they put the brakes on the project for a while. At this point, we cannot close the transaction without rezoning and at least making sure that, should the future owner want to move forward, they can.
Chair would like to redirect the discussion towards items that we can affect this evening. I do have a question regarding character and the intended development. You did make a statement that, I guess vehicular, the drive, the access will come off the alley, so I think that was really kind of my concern would be, given that there's an entire block on the south and then a smaller two lots on the north, the intent is not to create some kind of drive access mid-block off of 9th in here, which would be a change in the character?
No.
The intent is to have a structure that would be facing?
There are these structures on 9th.
9th and 10th, both?
Yes.
Okay.
And there will be a larger, well, individual driveways, I guess, in the back, is how I've seen the preliminary designs.
Kind of the rear load is at least what's being discussed now?
Yes, there will be...
And knowing that always changes over the course of design and development, but just, my concern is that it would keep kind of the character of that whole area, which would be frontages on the main thoroughways.
In fairness to the developer, actually, you know, Monroe dead ends right there.
Yes, it does.
And it was my idea to do what you're talking about, that I can hear you being opposed to, which is bring him in there and make that a nice entrance, and the developer is like, absolutely not, we'll need that dirt in order to make this make financial sense. So there will absolutely be 9th Street-facing homes on those, and everything will just rear-load.
Right. Well, you know, when you design so many things, you look at a layout of a plot and go, oh, well, hmm.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask staff to present findings and alternatives.
All right, here's findings. Land Development Code allows for a rezoning of land via map amendment. The rezoning would create non-conforming lots for two-family residential, so RTM. High-density zoning is scattered in the vicinity of the subject property. The comprehensive plan calls for low-density use at this property's location. So here are your three alternatives. Accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Ooh.
Yes, okay. Find that the map amendment is not in appropriate use for the property based upon the impact to the surrounding vicinity and do not recommend that the city council approve the map amendment. Find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Any questions for staff about findings and alternatives? I don't think we have any. Thank you, Jaclyn. Anyone entertaining a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept the findings and approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote.
Motion passes. See you later.
The next item on agenda is the meeting summary for review and possible action, and that would be the regular meeting summary for May the 2nd. Chair would entertain a motion or note for correction?
I don't know what happened.
Move to accept.
Do you have a motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes. We shall now vote. The next item on the agenda would be miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion and possible action. Seeing nothing from staff. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for June 27. And the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. We shall now vote. Thank you, everyone.